Welcome to all of our counselors and to the public tonight for the work session of Iowa City City Council, Tuesday, July 21. And lots of things on our agenda tonight has been a busy day for our council. Because we have a mask, a face covering order that was put into place today that we're very proud of. But we want to get some COVID-19 updates. I will talk about the order a little later. But maybe we'll start out with some COVID-19 updates. And I know that our city manager, as well as Dennis, the finance director, has a presentation for us, so we'll start there.
Thanks, Mayor. Dennis Bockenstedt is going to start us off with an updated presentation that you heard, I believe, in, in May or so about city finances. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dennis. And then after Dennis is done, Tracy Hightshew is going to join the call and describe the housing and rental assistance programs that are currently available in Johnson County.
All right, I'm going to try and share my screen here for everybody. Hopefully, everybody can, can see that. All right, and started here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dennis Bockenstedt. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Iowa City. And tonight, I'm going to give you a financial impact update for the COVID-19 pandemic. The City of Iowa City operates a variety of funds for many different purposes. And when this began several months ago, we took a look at those funds and tried to identify which ones were going to be impacted the greatest financially. At that time, we had identified the general fund, which was the city's primary operating fund, the road use tax fund, which is the fund that accounts for the state's road use tax sharing. And then three of our enterprise or business type funds, the parking, the transit, and the water funds, as we felt these were going to be the most impacted financially by the pandemic. I'm going to give you an update on, on those revenues that are being impacted, what we had estimated, and then, you know, what we're seeing now, and then maybe a little glimpse, if that's what you want to call it, into the future. For the general fund, the city's primary operating fund, we were anticipating lower hotel motel tax collections as hotels had closed and travel had decreased. Also, we were looking at reduced Parks and Recreation, Senior Center, and other program fees as facilities were enclosed and programming was being shut down. We're also looking at a lower fine revenue and construction and building permit revenues as activities slowed down and enforcement activities slowed. And something else that we're going to talk a little bit about tonight that we're seeing, we did not project this at that time, and that we are seeing a higher rate of unpaid property taxes. So several months ago, when we, when we just kind of took a rough guess as what the impact of our hotel motel taxes were going to be, we estimated nearly a complete loss or $478,000 through the remainder of the fiscal year 2020. Right now, we're looking at an actual shortfall of $376,000. We do have one more distribution coming from the state, but, but we're really not sure exactly what that's going to be, what we're coming, is going to come out of that. And also, just to let you know that, you know, these figures are preliminary. We, they're not audited. We haven't closed our books for fiscal year 2020 yet. So we're just kind of giving you a look at where we're at right now. For the Parks and Recreation and other programming fees, we originally estimated a loss of about $430,000. Our actual shortfall came in at just over $450,000. And for our fine and permit revenue, we'd estimated a loss of $385,000. And our actual shortfall was roughly about $282,000. And for those property taxes, we did not place an estimated shortfall on property tax revenue several months ago. However, due to delays in late penalties and, and the elimination or delay of the property tax sale, we currently have a shortfall of $654,000. So our original estimate was about $1.3 million shortfall in the general fund in 2020, and our actual shortfall to date is about $1.7 million. Looking ahead to next fiscal year, trying to see what's going to happen, you know, we kind of put together a six-month estimate if these conditions would persist through the end of the calendar year, and then a 12-month estimate if it would persist through the end of the fiscal year. And for those hotel motel tax collections, you know, they came in higher this last FY 2020 than we thought. So our six-month estimate going forward is $350,000, and our 12-month estimate is $650,000. For those Parks and Recreation and other programming fees, our six-month estimate is $500,000. Our 12-month estimate is about $1 million, and we're looking at a, almost a complete reduction of all recreation and programming fees. For fine and permit revenues, our six-month estimate is $550,000, and our 12-month estimate is about $1.1 million. And then for those property taxes, we have not yet placed an estimate on those. We're not exactly sure what's going to happen at the state level with these, or what's going to happen in the property tax sale or those future collections. And the impact could be great, so we have not ventured to make a guess at it at this point. So for fiscal year 2021, our, our estimated impact would be about $1.4 million revenue loss in the first six months and about $2.8 million loss over the next 12-month period. Just give a brief summary of that. For FY 20, we had a $1.7 million shortfall, which is about 2.5% of the city's revenue, general fund revenue. And we were able to offset this by cutting expenses such as consulting fees, travel training, capital L A, rec programming, we delayed the filling of open positions, and also then we had some remaining general fund contingency. So the bottom line for FY 20 is we did have revenue shortfall, however, we were able to offset that revenue with the expenditure cuts. For fiscal year 2021, we're looking at much the same. You know, revenue shortfall of the six months and the 12 months, roughly in the 1.9 to 3.8% range of total general fund revenue. And right now, we're looking to expenditure cuts and delay filling open positions and other spending cuts and delays to help offset that. We are going to keep monitoring the general fund monthly. And if we see property tax receipts or other revenues begin to slip, or these other receipts slipping further, additional cuts may be necessary. For the road use tax fund, which accounts for the state road use tax sharing, we did anticipate lower road use tax collections due to slower automobile sales and, and less passenger vehicle traffic. You know, our original estimate was based on information we'd received from the state, and we had estimated a shortfall of about $550,000 FY 20. And actuality, we should be able to meet our revenue, our original revenue targets for FY 20 and, and not experience a shortfall in this last fiscal year. For FY 21, the state is still projecting a fewer reduction in those road use tax revenues, however, at a lower rate. So we are projecting a six-month shortfall of $440,000 and a 12-month shortfall of $880,000. Just to summarize that, I guess we, we did not have a net revenue shortfall in '20. We had, however, cut CIP spending that was funded at the road use tax revenues by $500,000. So that cut that we made for '20 actually should help cover some of our shortfall that we're projecting in '21. DOT did, or does have an estimate of a 10% shortfall in those road use tax revenues for next year. We are going to keep reviewing these monthly to ensure that they're coming in at that rate or above. And that CIP cut we made should cover that first six months of '21. However, you know, looking for the second half of '21, if, if the situation stays the way it is, further cuts and spending changes may be necessary. For the parking fund, this is actually, the fund is probably impacted. The most of these funds we're going to talk about is, is parking enforcement had ceased back in March and April. We saw a dramatic decrease in revenues. At the time, we, we estimated a revenue shortfall of about $1.8 million over the last three and a half months of the fiscal year. And our actual shortfall was around $1.5 million as we had resumed enforcement and collection throughout the month of June. For FY 21, we're still looking at a revenue shortfall of about $1.5 million, primarily from, from hourly parking. And that would translate into a 12-month loss of about $2.7 million. To summarize that, we did, I have a shortfall of 20 revenue, about $1.5 million. We did manage to use cash on hand to pay off the Harrison Street parking ramp lease. This eliminated the parking fund's debt coverage requirements. So that is no longer an issue for the parking fund. And also freed up the parking fund use restrictions that were in place because of that lease. And also, this added about $80,000 a month of, of net cash flow to the parking system. So the parking fund didn't finish behind where it normally would. We threw expenditure cuts and CIP cuts, we did manage to cover about 50% of, of that lost revenue. And the remainder of that would have been taken out of fund balance or cash balances. And we are projecting losses moving into '21. We are monitoring these revenues weekly to see what is going on. We, we feel we may still have a structural deficit in the parking fund. So we're, we're keeping a close eye on it. And it is possible that we may need to make additional expenditure cuts or other changes down the road in the parking system. The Transit Fund, this is one that, you know, is, as, as people quit going to work and transportation slowed, bus routes were altered. We did see a reduction in bus fares and bus pass revenue. In addition, we saw a reduction in the parking charges and parking revenues for the Course Free Transportation Center, which falls under the, the transit system. So for the bus fares and passes, we had estimated about $350,000 of lost revenue. And actuality, we came up short about $270,000. And in the Court Street Parking Ramp, we'd estimated a loss of about $222,000. And the actual shortfall came in about $84,000. So our total losses in FY 20 for the Transit Fund, we estimated $573,000, actually came in about $356,000. And then looking towards fiscal year 21, for those bus fares and passes, they continue to come in at a lower, lower rate. We expect to come in about $510,000 short in, through December. And for 12 months, that would translate into just over a million. For the parking ramp, we would come in short about $230,000 through six months and about $400,000 for the 12-month period. So total impact in the Transit Fund of about a $740,000 loss in the first six months of the year, and in the second half, or the total of the year would be about $1.4 million. And so although we are experiencing revenue shortfalls in the transit system, the Transit Fund was the beneficiary of the CARES Act. It received federal funding of $5.1 million to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. And so for that FY 20, we will use the CARES Act funding to cover that shortfall. We also anticipate using that CARES Act funding to cover those revenue losses in '21. And it is possible that, that remainder of that CARES Act funding could be used in future fiscal years as well. The Water Fund is the last fund we'll talk about that we expected to see impacts, or at least major impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic. We discontinued enforcement and collection of unpaid utility bills back in March at that time. So we were seeing and anticipated seeing reduced revenues from late fees and other shut-off notices. We're anticipating lower water consumption as, as business activities slowed. And we also were, the council approved to delay the July 1st 5% rate increase through October 1st. So for our FY 20 impact, those late fees were estimated $140,000 shortfall. Actual shortfall was about $133,000. And then for reduced water consumption, we were estimating a $210,000 shortfall. Actually, we will not have a shortfall, and that is primarily because Procter &amp; Gamble has not slowed their water usage at their health and beauty care production facility to the extent we were anticipating. So the total impact in the Water Fund originally was estimated $350,000. Actually, came in currently at $133,000. So for FY 21, if we were to discontinue collection practices for the next six months, we would anticipate losing $240,000 of revenue. And if we were to continue that practice through the end of the fiscal year, and we'd estimate a loss of about $475,000 of revenue. Same if we delayed the 5% rate increase through the end of the year, we would lose $220,000 of revenue. And if we carried that through the end of the fiscal year, we would lose about $450,000 of revenue. Those total impacts amounted to $460 over six months and $925,000 over 12-month period. So to give you an idea of the paths to accounts that we are not pursuing, right now, there's a total of 932 paths to accounts that total just over $156,000 of revenue. And right now, we've been the beneficiary of continued water usage beyond our expectations at Procter &amp; Gamble. And I was able to absorb any other pumpage short flows or those paths to accounts. For FY 21, however, we are going to continue to monitor these revenues on an ongoing basis. If the Procter &amp; Gamble usage does start to slow, it is slowing. But if it begins to slow at the pace that we originally thought, and you couple that with these other revenue losses, it is possible we could experience stress on our bond coverage. So we'll be, definitely want to be mindful to maintain those coverages for our water revenue bonds. Other revenue issues that we are experiencing, as I mentioned, property tax collections were coming at a lower rate. For FY 20, right now, we've collected just over 98% of our property taxes. It's not uncommon that we collect right around 100%. And, you know, this was primarily due to delayed late penalties that the state has imposed, and also they're, I've canceled or at least delayed the property tax sale. And so right now, we currently have about $1.1 million in uncollected property taxes for fiscal year 20. And that is across all property tax supported funds. And if this situation were to persist into fiscal year 21, this could have a substantial impact on property tax supported funds such as employee benefits, debt service, the transit system, and the, the general fund, of course. We're also seeing lower sewer revenues. This is primarily due to water usage at the University of Iowa. They produce their own water, but they pay us a sewer fee, and we have seen a decline in that revenue. We're going to continue to monitor this, see if this trend is going to persist, and then, of course, evaluate the consequences. The sewer fund was and is relatively healthy and has a healthy bond coverage on their, on their sewer revenue bonds. And so there's no real threat at this time as far as them not meeting their requirements of their bonds. Our interest income revenues are dropping, and this is pretty much across the board. The federal funds rate has declined to near 0%. So we are seeing very low rates return in our money markets. We do still have investments that we purchased over the last year, year and a half that are retreating that have a higher rate of return. However, those are being renewed at a much, much lower rate of return. And this loss of revenue is going to really impact pretty much most of the operating funds of the city. So just to give you a brief summary of, of everything, General Fund has experienced broad-based revenue declines. And right now, we'll be able to manage that through expenditure cuts and spending freezes. The road use tax fund, the state is projecting a 10% revenue shortfall. We're going to continue to monitor this. We believe the initial call we made should carry us through the end of the calendar year. But after that, it is possible we may need to do more work there. The parking fund is, continues to be stressed financially. We are monitoring this weekly. It may require further intervention. The Transit Fund is having an experience or experiencing a drop in revenues. Due to the CARES Act funding, however, it should be able to mitigate those revenue shortfalls in the Transit Fund. And in the Water Fund, we are having lower late fee revenues and collecting any shut-off notice revenues. We did delay the 5% rate increase that was set for July 1st for three months. However, due to Procter &amp; Gamble consuming water at a higher rate than we had estimated last year, that has been able to mitigate those revenue losses at this time. However, we're to continue to monitor to see that Procter &amp; Gamble, if they start to fall off, then, then that could cause us an issue. And I will try to answer whatever questions you might have.
Dennis, could you just quickly explain to me again the, the bond issue with water, please?
Sure. We issue water revenue bonds and sewer revenue bonds. And essentially, those are bonds that are payable with those revenue sources are being pledged to repay them. So in lieu of using property taxes or pledging the full faith credit of the city, we pledge those water bond holders that we will maintain water revenue at a level that's sufficient to repay those bonds. And usually, when we talk about coverage, they want us to have our revenues exceed our expenses by more than the actual amount of the bond payment. And in this case, it's 110% of that bond payment that we need to maintain.
Thanks very much.
I have a question that might be more for Jeff than Dennis, I'm not sure. But could either of you provide a little bit of insight into what the expenditure cuts and spending freezes in the general fund really entail? Like, what does that look like as far as service delivery from the city?
Well, as far as the, the service delivery goes, the one, some that is the most impacted was our Parks and Recreation Fund. Most of the essential operations have been maintained. However, as, you know, programming has been discontinued, you know, those revenues have fallen off. But then so have a lot of the expenses that, that are connected with those revenues. You know, also, it was late in the fiscal year, we pretty much had cut most all the travel and training expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year. We did also have some, some large consulting line items or budgets in our line items that, that we were able to cut and, and not utilize. And then there was a variety of other smaller cuts that departments identified. And then there were some vacant positions we did not fill, and Jeff may be able to speak more to those. And then, of course, we had a large contingency that we, we budgeted every year 1% of our general fund expenses. And we had a healthy portion of that remaining that we were able to use to offset some of that revenue loss as well.
In terms of positions, we have gone forward and filled a number of positions, but I have held some back. Council may recall with the fiscal year 21 budget, you approved several new positions. And several of those positions, I just haven't filled yet. Typically, we would have the authority to do so as of July 1st, the start of the fiscal year. But in this case, I've held back the third climate action position, which was more of the, the data analyst type of position for our climate action team. So instead of a three-person team, right now, we have a two-person team. Also held back the two new forestry workers in Parks and Rec that were approved as part of the budget. And hoping to fill those as we progress through the fiscal year. But until we have a better handle on our, our financial situation, I just felt it was best not to put people in those positions if there's a, if there's a risk that we would have to eliminate positions going forward. And then we also have a few vacant police officer positions right now that, that are not being filled. As new positions become vacant due to retirements or, or people moving on for other opportunities, I'll take a look at those, and if we can either delay or altogether not fill that position until things stabilize, we'll do that.
How much has been budgeted for the temporary employees that were not using it right now?
Yeah, as far as, you know, we did pay the temporary employees, I believe, through May. Even though they were not working, we were maintaining those, might have been the middle of May. We were still maintaining those, those salaries. I, I do not have an exact figure as far as, at that point, what we are saving in temporary wages. A lot of those are tied to the programming that would have been provided. I can't get that figure for you, however. You know, because when we lose that revenue, we also lose all the programming costs attached to that revenue, such as when the, the City Park Pool did not open up. You know, that's all that revenue we're not getting from the, the park pool. It's also all the expenses and the staffing that is being cut as well. But, but I can't get you a more detailed figure on that.
Sure, please. And do you see like more increase of residential's water bill? Because, to be honest with you, my water bill is going high than normal because the kids staying home.
It's certainly possible, you know, the, the commercial, we would anticipate loss of water consumption due to business closures. It is quite possible that some of that was picked up through an increase in residential usage for more people having to eat at home.
With our deficits projected, is there any thoughts of borrowing funds to help us through this time? Because I, right now, I hear that we're holding positions, which for the climate action, I mean, I understand it. But the climate action is something that's critical that council wants to do. So have we thought about any other options for making it through this time as far as borrowing money? I know that's not the optimal idea, but has there been any discussion on that?
Well, I, I don't know that we would want to go to the extent where we'd actually have to borrow funds, primarily because we do have, we do have an emergency reserve, and we do have a large fund balance in our general fund and in some of our other funds. And so I would not anticipate that we would need to borrow funds. Part of the challenge with this pandemic is, is nobody knows when the end is coming. So, you know, if we, we knew there's kind of a better beginning and an end, we could plan for that without knowing when the end is going to be, and that the, the lost revenue could be prolonged. It's difficult to know exact It's difficult to know exactly, you know, when that deficit spending would end. And when there's, you don't have an exit plan, when you create deficit spending down the road, it can create a rather large problem in the future. So, you know, if we had kind of an idea of when this would come to an end, we could do a planned spend down of, of fund balance. And then kind of hopefully, you know, transition that into a soft landing. However, with no idea when, you know, revenues would resume or what the future looks like, that makes it much more difficult to, to plan for how we would use that fund balance and strategically fund positions. Because we don't know when those revenues resume, that would pay for them.
If we can go back, you, you was projecting the loss and, yeah, until the end of the 21 fiscal year or?
That's correct. The 21 fiscal year and, and that's just a kind of a rough idea. I mean, a lot of these are, are rough ideas because we really don't know what's going to happen. And for a while there, back in March and April, it seemed like on a daily basis, things were changing. And then on top of that, you know, we could not control the actions that the state were taking. And we go up to property tax, delaying late penalties and delaying the property tax sale. And so there, there have been things that have been out of our control. In addition, you know, there was talk of federal funding to assist local governments. That has really been hit or miss. You know, we've received some things such as CDBG and Home, you know, public housing, but then there's other areas such as parking and our general operations that, that have received nothing. So it's the kind of environment that just makes it really difficult to, to know what to do. And, and so that, those projections really are just, just rough projections because you know, things could start back up in three months or they could be shut down for, you know, another year. We just don't know.
Thank you.
Dennis, on the water rate increase, the 5%, do we have any sense of when we might consider putting that increase into effect?
Well, well, right now it is, that delay has been delayed through October 1st. We are talking about some other forms of, of relief. You know, for utility bills and, and, and late fees and penalties. You know, at this time, you know, we are, we are still sticking with the October 1st resumption for collection and procedures and that, that the rate increase, however, you know, between now and October 1st, anything could happen and, and, and those things are really still up for discussion.
I think on that note, we probably want to revisit that. Maybe it's your second meeting in, in August or your first meeting in September to see if, if that is something you want to progress with or if we want to push it off further. As Dennis indicated in this presentation, the revenues have come in a little better than we expected on that. So my sense is that we might be able to, to push that a little bit, but I think we'd all like another month or so of, of data to help inform that decision.
I mean, one, one thing that I would be interested in is seeing, considering the, the rate increase, if we had rate discounts for those who need financial assistance. And I don't know what percentage of our water users would, would be able to pay that, you know, we wouldn't be too concerned with that 5% increase in which, where we would be concerned, but you know, I, I, I'm interested in seeing if we can do the increase. While at the same place, lower rates for those who need them.
I really disagree with you, John, on that because he just said not over 900 people, they are not even paying their bill, they're past your balance. And that will tell us exactly, there is a lot of people are suffering. And we don't want to make like another burden on them. And even on, on this beacon on that line, I was trying to ask also if we can continue not shutting the water for people and not giving them like also fee, late fee. Is that still going to happen or, you know, and I really encourage not to increase the water right now if we respond it. Because as, as just from your report, over 900, almost 1,000, 1,000 families did not even pay it.
Yeah. And, you know, the council can at their discretion decide, you know, how they want to handle those items. You know, the one thing that, that we pay attention to our will is ensuring that we meet the covenants that we pledged to our bondholders. And so as long as we're able to meet those bond covenants, we really, really are able to, to do with fees and rates and collections as, as we wish. And so that's really up to the council discretion. We have made pledges to those bondholders that we would meet certain covenants and we would meet certain contractual demands. And so those are the items that, that we pay close attention to. And then, of course, you know, just as far as this cash flow in the fund and then, you know, capital replacement, some of those things that might slow a bit, such as water main replacement, you know, infrastructure at the water plant. And so there are other considerations that, that could come into play. However, those are, those are priorities and discretions. And those bond covenants are contractual commitments.
Yeah, I really don't understand on those bond very good, but from the way that you explain it, I guess they should know that there is pandemic going on. And maybe a lot of things not making us meet the needs and maybe yeah, right now you see like some bank, you know, coming up with some like break for those people like who cannot make a payment. I mean, like just all the financial institutions right now, they're doing a lot to, you know, understand, on understanding the, the dynamic of the pandemic. And since IOCT, you know, they always met the standards. I hope there is something there, so it's not going to be really hard on, you know, on like meeting the requirement. And I don't know what about using the, it have to be, maybe it has to be from the water usage and you have to show that you have the money or we can use the emergency fund. I really don't understand on that, but I, I believe regardless of is this going to affect it or how much you're going to pay for fee or how it look is still, we need to think about the IOCT residents who cannot pay this right now.
Well, maybe a simple way to think about it is, is, you know, um, you know, the bonds are, it's a loan. It's like taking a mortgage out on your home. And, you know, if you fail to repay that mortgage, then it's going to be harder to get a mortgage in the future. So, you know, you know, the city has borrowed money and we've made a commitment to repay it. And, and when we fail to, to repay those debts or meet those covenants, then it'll make it harder for the city to obtain those loans in the future if we need them. And in which case then we would pay a higher rate of interest to get them. So of course, that is, that is just one of the considerations of the many.
Sure. But don't you think as, right now, even if I don't pay my mortgage, the bank is understanding that I'm going through a tough time. They go back to my history and see that I never missed a payment and, you know, in the future also. I think all this will come in, supposed to come in consideration by those kind of people. I really am not, I don't have experience on doing that. But I, I don't think we, we should have a lot of affect on those if we are really maintaining this for a long time and just given the fact that this is pandemic never happened before. And, you know, maybe that's will help a little bit. I'm not sure. That's your area of experience. Like, can't say anything here, but that's my two cents.
I, I might offer on, on that, I think if, if, if the council wants to prioritize the utility relief through our own utilities, which, which Dennis indicated is, is we're currently about 150,000 behind in all utility accounts, maybe about 950 or so accounts. We would look to probably use reserves to the extent that we can, but as soon as you get close to those bond covenants, it's a big enough deal in a utility operation that I think we'd want to look towards other sources like the emergency fund. So I think what we, we look for as staff is council direction to say utility relief is, is most important. And, and how you want to prioritize that relief. And then we can figure out a way to get that done. It, it probably, I don't think we would have much success working with the bondholders on this particular case, but we certainly could look towards the emergency fund or other internal sources to help bridge that gap.
Yeah. Were you going to kind of walk council through some potential relief efforts that council can consider? Similar to what you did the last time?
Yeah, I have the, I have the same presentation. I didn't modify it, but I thought we could revisit some of those points and we can, we can talk through some of those issues. You know, it's, the utilities is a good example, just because we have 946 accounts that are past due doesn't mean that we have 946 accounts that don't have the ability to pay. When you announce, it's kind of like the property taxes. When you announce there's not going to be late fees and you announce that there's not going to be shut offs, you will get people that maybe have an ability to pay that choose not to because there's, there's no penalty. So that gets into a question of how many, how much administration do you want to round a program like this? Do you want us to, to go through and try to verify need from all those 950 accounts? Or do we just wipe, wipe the slate clean and take their balances to zero? And then you get into issues of people that have really been struggling to live day to day. But they have found resources to pay their bills and, and those people need relief too, even though they're current. So there's a lot of equity issues to concern, to, to, to consider when designing a, a utility relief program like this. And we can walk through some of that, maybe after Tracy's done with her portion of the presentation tonight.
Okay. Great. Any more questions for Dennis? All right, here and now. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll introduce Tracy Highthew from Neighborhood and Development Services, and she just has a few slides to go through on our housing relief programs that are available here locally.
Welcome, Tracy.
Oh. Let me share my screen with you. Okay. Do you see it?
Not yet. There is coming now. Great.
Got it now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. So I wanted to take you through the resources that we have available in our area for COVID relief. It will not be comprehensive. I'm focusing on those funds available for housing assistance to maintain housing. So this doesn't include all the funds that we, we receive to get folks out of shelter or depopulate shelters. It also doesn't include all the multiple of agencies and foundations who may have allocated money to employees, clients, families in need. So I'm basically focusing on the government response and basically United Way for emergency housing costs. The first major program that came out to assist folks in Iowa was the IFAs, the Iowa Finance Authorities, Iowa Divorce Prevention, Divorce and Foreclosure Prevention Program. They allocated 20 million across the state. For renters, they capped assistance at 3,200. You could get up to four months of assistance, as long as you stayed under 3,200. And for mortgage relief, it was up to 3,000. There were some caveats. You have to only apply online. You go out there, you answer these 12 to 13 questions. If you're eligible, then you could proceed. If you're not, you're not. Undocumented residents aren't eligible. People who received the stimulus unemployment, that $600 payment, they weren't eligible. So eligibility is limited, but we are encouraging folks in our community that if you are eligible, apply there first because of amount of funds that are available. The city has always been expecting that since COVID said COVID came out, HUD announced that they would allocate the city 410,000, $422 or COVID relief. We met earlier back in May, we submitted an annual action plan amendment to HUD that basically had 60% of that going to direct aid to households. We also went up to 3,200 up to three months. CDBG funds only allow up to three months in emergency payments. We're contracting with community services. We just entered that contract this week. We got HUD's contract with us the week before. Community hopes to start providing this service as of this next upcoming Monday. Due to the delay that we knew we'd have from the time that we were notified of the federal funds and to the time we thought that we could actually utilize the funds, we allocated 50,000 to Shelterhouse to start a program back in early June to provide assistance much like we would with community, but limited to two months because we were hoping that was a timeframe that we would have the federal funds. Those, like I said, we entered that contract with Shelterhouse early June. As of July 20th, they've assisted 19 households and spent 8,000, a little over 8,000. They have 36,000 remaining. They've been working to do outreach. They're partnering with Community Center for Worker Justice. They've been on site. I believe three times to date. Center for Worker Justice has helped with translation and they've helped with scheduling appointments. Shelterhouse does look at the impact on COVID on families and they've been flexible in that documenting that need. I think Mark said for one family, the way they documented was they called the employer, they asked if he'd been working. They said yes, but they didn't have the work. So they just documented that phone call and they were able to assist that household with benefits. And I wanted to mention besides the Shelterhouse and community funds, we did allocate 70,000 to community crisis services back in February to help with our security deposit program. That was part of your assistance in the Affordable Housing Fund. It actually was really helpful during the COVID as we tried to de-populate those shelters because we were using some of those funds for security deposit for people to get out of shelter. As of the end of June, they had spent 34,000. They have 35,000 remaining. And then the last program to highlight is Johnson County. They recently agreed, they allocated 40,000 to the Center for Worker Justice to help with their, their program that provides up to $600 to families in need, primarily immigrants and refugees. Iowa City, you'll be, you'll be reviewing their request for 25,000 tonight. And in this program, eligible expenses would include that rent, mortgage, utilities, food, healthcare and childcare. As far as CARES Act funding goes for utilities, LaHeep received an extra 365,000 for our area. The ministry agency is HACAP, so HACAP provides a regular assistance and then due to the CARES Act funding, you get it, you get up to an additional $1,000 for those funds. Then there's funds that the local community receive for either, I call it specific needs or targeted households. So the Veterans Administration provided 650,000 for the rent utilities. That is going through HACAP. That funding ends as of July 31st, I believe, and I'm not sure if that will be renewed. Shelterhouse was informed that they would get another 677,000 through the CARE Act for rapid rehousing and homeless prevention. They've not determined what mix will, they'll dedicate to rapid rehousing and what will be for homeless prevention or the service territory. So due to our city funds for the CDBG that are available to Iowa City residents, they might prioritize those folks in Johnson County that do not live in Iowa City. But we don't know yet. They've not announced the funding parameters there. And then our local housing authority received extra money through the CARES Act to cover the increases as people were filing those notice of changes of income forms. We had to increase our payments to the landlord to make up for that. So we received extra funds for the, those, the extra needs. And we also received 18 additional vouchers. They're called mainstream housing vouchers. They're for persons experiencing homelessness with a disabling condition. So we, we have those and we were started to implement those. During this time, United Way has been fundraising. They provided $818,000 to assist 154 households in Johnson and Washington Counties. However, unfortunately, the no long, they don't have funds available any longer. For the good news, the city does expect an additional 686,000 from the state. Instead of being directly routed to us through HUD, they are going through the state. We've not been told if there's any extra requirements or limitations on those funds. The last time I spoke with the state, they said their amendment is with HUD. They're reviewing it. Once that goes through that process, we expect that money. I'm hoping by that time we could see how the funds are going through our local entities, you know, like community crisis services and Shelterhouse to determine where we need the funds. Also, we will be releasing an application this week for nonprofits to apply. We have up to, I believe, 160 some thousand for nonprofits impacted by COVID that focus on homeless, childcare, mental health and food. We'll have a two to three week application window. We'll get those applications in and then we'll make our funding recommendations to the city manager. So So we have those funds up and coming. They're going out. What we find odd, or, you know, during this pandemic, it's a learning curve for everybody. Speaking to Johnson County Social Services that, and it was common with a lot of providers that assistance requests are down. And some of those might be like their gas, electric assistance were down. Maybe that's because there's extra LaHeep money that they give for people to. But there, there's several reasons why that might be. It might be the, the receipt of stimulus funds, the extra unemployment benefits, loans, people might be putting on credit cards. But from the social service providers that I've spoke to, they do, they do expect that once the CARES Act unemployment benefits end and the eviction moratorium ends, they're going to see a spike in requests. And that's when people start coming to our local community, our local providers asking for assistance. That's a summary of what I know that's available in the community right now and when we'll release it. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. What about the months, because we spoke about, I don't know, spoke to, I spoke to Jeff, I guess, about the, the months of July. Is the Shelterhouse still able now to, because I know that it was April, May, and June?
Yeah, their, their agreement just says anything after April first, but it has to be in arrears. So if they got a request in June, they couldn't pay for July because rent was not late yet.
No, now, I mean, now is.
Yeah, they couldn't now, yes.
Okay, and yes, I'm going to be honest with you here. Just given the fact that they use only eight thousand. I think, like my personal opinion on that, this is because of the difficult that people reach out this program. I know that they, you know, both people who come at the, from the Shelterhouse to CWJ every Wednesday, they are amazing. They done a very good job talking to people. They try to accommodate, accommodate as much as they can. But the problem is, they, they take forty-five minutes with each person. And they come here at ten o'clock and they leave at four o'clock. Divide that time into forty-five minutes. Once a week, a lot of people have to go and without applying. A lot of people call, you know, call in the Shelterhouse and it take them like two weeks or something like that, you know? It is very difficult. I'm not like accusing the Shelterhouse by any means because that, that they don't have a lot of maybe staff to handle this capacity. You know, there's a lot of people who came to apply for this and also the language barrier and everything. And for example, tomorrow they are coming here, but they already send us the list for the people that they're going to meet here for each time. And we have like few spot to enter some names that we can do. And we have a lot of people, we don't have a spot for them, to meet them. I, I guess, you know, really, this is being difficult for the people and we need to see a way that we can expand these services to the people who really need it before community even come. Because now it take people a week to wait so they can meet person to person. And now they cannot meet because there is no spot for them. It takes forty-five minutes per person.
I can tell you. Shelterhouse does do a comprehensive assessment. What we were finding when they first reported their benefits is that they, 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 they do might take some time, but they are also looking to see what other programs people can qualify for. And that does take some time. So it's not just they're looking at this assistance, but I know they've made referrals over to general assistance. They made referrals over to different programs that they know. But since Shelterhouse, House is not here to talk about it, we can have them respond. Might not, it won't be tonight, but we can have them provide a memo.
I'm just going to tell you right now, I'm, I'm, I'm telling you experience. That's okay if you don't believe me. But that's what they told me when I asked them why they take, they are doing great job. Not, they are not only referring people to another services. They are actually applying for people for a state program, if you are eligible, for a state program. They don't turn them and say, hey, go and apply online. They sit there and physically help those people apply for that program. I being seeing them, I know what they're doing, but I'm just saying that when they are weak here, the Center for Worker Justice is not enough for them to do their work. I take an application over phone because you have to provide, you have, first they take application over phone, but you have to somehow send all your documentation. They are doing, they went far and beyond to accommodate people by sometime, yes, send it to me to my phone. Maybe you just send me a picture of your documentation to my phone, text it to me instead of like, um. They went far and beyond to do stuff. They don't have to defend themselves, but still, they are short of stuff. That's what I mean. They only two people doing this here. I don't know at the Shelterhouse, how many people is doing that? But you call only, I call myself, they would tell me I have to talk to Gina and I have to leave a message. And other people also, they came here, so I come with a message for them, so they don't speak the English. We have to do that. That's something from my personal experience, you can, they can respond, but those are obstacles. If they want to respond differently, they can respond differently and I can prove the opposite. But I don't think so because I hear that from them. They told me take them forty-five minutes for one person because they have to do all this. And they try to hurry up. Sometime they give me the application, I give it to the people, fill out the application. By the time you go there, you just, they will go over it again, so we can expedite the process. But that's what is going on right now. And they are doing a fantastic job, no doubt.
I think I would like to definitely see whatever, maybe a memo from them to maybe highlight some of the great things about the program as well as some of the challenges that they've faced. It might be good for council to know. The other thing I wanted to mention is the city expects the six hundred and eighty-six thousand from the CDPG. I don't know what the CV funds mean. What does CV mean?
The Development Block Grant and then the coronavirus has a special initial that they attach on it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's how they identify it, separate from our regular entitlement funds.
Just when I thought I knew all of the little acronyms, there's one more in there. But I, with the six hundred and eighty-six thousand, I understand that we don't have the, all of the requirements for the funds. But do you anticipate that any of these funds will be able to be backdated to funds we've already released or would it be moving forward?
If it's anything like our regular CDPG funds, the waiver, it goes back to once the, the pandemic started. But I, I don't know what the state will require until I get the requirements. I'm assuming, no, I, I mean, you can't duplicate benefits. So if our program's already paid for someone to have their April, May, and June rent paid, no, they can't get it done again. But they, it could be eligible for July, August. I, well, I don't know because the Community Development Block Grant Program only allows you three months of assistance. So I don't know if, just because it's through the state allocation, if you can double, if you can, if you can do more than three months, I'd have to find out.
I guess the state is doing more than three months. I have somebody who will get paid for April, May, June, and August.
Not, not with the, you with Community Development Block Grant Funds?
No, no, I'm talking about the state fund.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The state funds you can have up to four months. It's not CDPG, it's not, it's state funded, it's not through HUD. But the Community Development Block Grant Fund has that limitation that you can only pay up to three months.
Oh, you're talking about the one not, not to start yet at the community?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And do you know when it's going to start? Because I called them and they said not ready.
Um, I talked to, I keep calling Crisis Center. I called Community Crisis Services. I spoke with Sarah today. We hope to go live on Monday.
Oh, good. And if somebody was receiving six hundred dollar unemployment and for any reason, you know, as these days we hear a lot of people, they receive the unemployment for certain times and after that they just disconnected from them. And they came and they even ask them to pay everything back because the employer that you was working on, they protested. So you are not eligible, so you pay everything back. How those people will be eligible if they say, yes, we receive it for a certain time?
What Community Crisis Center look like, it, it, you just have to show COVID impact. So you have to show that somehow, however they, they want to do that, is that their income was lower. Their household income of all the adults in their house was lower after COVID. And however they want to do that, and even if they got the unemployment benefits, if they were, they had twenty bucks less in income than they did before, then they would be eligible. We don't provide assistance. We just have to show that their income now is less than it was.
What about the people who've been impacted before the COVID nineteen and they still impacted by any another reason? And they are low income and they are not making any.
You have to show it was directly due to COVID for the federal funds. So we're only getting the money due to COVID. So somehow you'd have to document that the reason that you have less money than before is due to COVID. So it might not be that we can help you with federal funds.
Even if you are coding fine job during this time because of the COVID?
We can ask, I just don't, you, you have to show COVID impacts. So if you, I mean, maybe if you just left your job, but if you hadn't had a job for seven months and then COVID impacted, I don't know how we would verify that there's been a COVID impact.
I, I really don't know what can we do for the, those kind of residents. You know, like for example, I, two households who are making three thousand, four thousand total before COVID. And for the COVID impact, they now making three thousand five hundred. They lost like five hundred. They showing COVID impact and another person, he made zero and he struggle and now they made zero and they are not eligible because even their income is zero and as a person his income is three thousand five hundred, showing there is impact of five hundred. You know, is there is a way that the money at the Shelterhouse will be for, you know, the rest of the money could be for those people who are really low, very low income. They are not, they couldn't pay their rent or anything. Since every resident are benefiting somehow, how can we make those people our benefit too, you know?
That I don't know. Obviously, we're not going to have enough for everybody, so we have to figure out some way to prioritize. We'll have to discuss that.
We don't have enough for everyone. When it finish, it finish, you know? Like now in our programs is donation base and we have setting them out for his comfort serve. And that's how it is, you know? I, I don't think we have to have for everyone. Especially those like, it's not going to be like a lot of cases look like this. Same way like the undocumented people and comparing them to the people who can apply for another, you know, programs. There are a lot of people qualify for another programs and there are few people are not. We, we need to talk seriously about those people really. Because if, if we are providing help, you know, and we are restricted by federal law, let us just implement the value of, of us, of the city. How can we help those people who are, their income is really low and they are not even making ends meet? And how can we help them if we still have out of fifty thousand, we spend only eight thousand?
What I might say is, when Jeff maybe gives his overview, because this program here is really with some restrictions because of the CDPG, maybe we'll be able to get into talking about some of the individuals that are impacted by COVID. But, you know, for the, the example, they didn't have a job prior to COVID. COVID, now they can't get a job to show loss of income. But I think we can have that conversation here sometime with, maybe during the time of Jeff. Any other questions for Tracy?
Tracy, I think we highlighted the challenge of these different programs, different sources of relief and what Mayor Portem was talking about with Shelterhouse taking a good amount of time with individuals to ensure that they have all the opportunities that might be available to them. Or do you feel like we're doing what we can or do you have recommendations for making sure that a given individual in the community knows about all the different opportunities? Is there any way to streamline that with, you know, if they come looking at one program to ensure that every point of contact, they'll have the opportunity to learn about everything?
Well, we're fine when Shelterhouse first started, we didn't advertise, we didn't do huge marketing effort for the Shelterhouse funds because we're relying on referrals because we're hoping that our federal funds would come through faster than what they did. What we're finding from Shelterhouse is that out of a hundred phone calls, maybe only ten knew about the state's program. So getting that information out that, you know, first go, go apply. And if you're not eligible, then, so our, our priority order, and we're going to start marketing this and we're starting to, we're going to push this out to the community. The flyer that's been made basically says there is emergency housing available. Contact first, you know, go online, take, take the checklist to see if you're eligible. If you are, apply. If not, contact Community Crisis Services and then they will go through. We have it with Omni-Linguin now to translate into different languages, just the flyer so that we can start getting that information out. So basically, after you take the state's checklist and if you're determined not eligible, you come to Community Crisis Services, they will help. And there's also, it's not just about assistance, it's about knowing all the programs available in the community that they, that help you and they refer you out. If they can't help you due to the federal requirements about documentation, they're going to send you to Shelterhouse. And if you approve the money tonight for Center for Worker Justice, they're going to send you there if that's appropriate. So we're hoping that triage as of next week starts with, you know, folks go to IFA's website, they apply. If they're not eligible, they go to Community Crisis Services and then Community Crisis Services. If they can't help them, then they start directing to, to different community resources that can. Is that, does that answer your question?
But to be honest with you, a lot of people don't know. I don't know. I, I'm in the city and I don't know a lot of things. I guess the way that we advertise things is need to be improved, no doubt. Okay, I know that, Tris, you are doing your best. You are trying to reach out even to our organization. I received one of your email for that, you know, for the Shelterhouse. Nothing against you. But I don't know, but there is somehow, maybe we need to translate this to different language. So it's gang, that kind of the people. And, you know, I, I, we have money to translate, you know? We, we can just pay somebody thirty dollar an hour to translate for us all this kind of benefit. If we can put it on one sheet and make translation, the people, they, they tend to grab the attention to the language that they know better. Than like looking at the paper that they don't understand what's going on on it. Or, you know, also like when you send text message, you and you, like I have to copy and paste the link to the group. And everybody called me back and say, what's this? And I will try to explain it again with that or I have to send a message in Arabic with the link and say, this is this and that. So I, I think we need to do like a better job in reaching out to the community with translation material. If we can allocate money for translation, this is have to be budgeted even in our budget every year. So we can reach out to the people that we cannot. That's, that's some kind of the equity that we're looking for.
Yeah, man, I, as far as I understand, I think Tracy had just said that they, that they translated some of the materials. I agree, we need to do that. We need to be pushing it out to the community in every way possible. And in, in sort of, simple isn't the correct word, but sort of basic information so that people then know where to go and seek information or where to go and seek help.
All right, any more items for Tracy?
Thank you for everything you do. Really, this is amazing, helping a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. We'll go back to Jeff. Jeff, do you have any?
Yeah, Tracy, you want to stop sharing your screen? I'll, I'll share mine. I don't want to talk very long because I, you know, you've only got a limited time left in your work session and I want to make sure that, that you can discuss various types of relief. So back in, in May, we discussed various types of economic response that we could provide due to, due to COVID. And I'm just going to bring that presentation back up and walk you through a few pieces of that. I won't go through everything here. So one of the things that we talked about that I still feel is, is very important for the council to, to consider are some, are some guiding principles because as we're starting to see, you're, you've gotten some requests for relief. Better Together has asked for funding, Center for Worker Justice has asked for funding. Council, you've created the fifty thousand dollar program we've just talked about. I, I really think that that's going to continue to come your way and you're going to get one-off requests for, for dollars. And there needs to be some framework established for considering, considering how we're going to spend our dollars so that they all work together and they're, and they're coordinated. So these were seven principles that I presented back in May as, as a starting point, but this is really the foundation. We should, we should identify exactly what, what we. We should, I, we should identify exactly what, what we want to make sure that any relief effort, um, accomplishes. And, and we don't need to work through this tonight, but I do encourage you to carve out some time uh, for a discussion amongst yourself on whether these are the right principles or not. Um, uh, or whether there's, uh, uh, other, uh, items we need to consider. I don't want you to worry so much about, um, the funding source because I think that you can get down some rabbit holes on funding sources. I think if you can articulate, um, exactly, you know, what your priorities are, your, your staff is here and, and Dennis and the finance team will, will work to figure out the, the right source of funding. But as you can see here, we do have several options depending on the type of relief that, uh, the council's interested in. So back in May, we talked about four different types of relief, individual and household relief, nonprofit relief, business and, and economic stimulus. Um, really my takeaway from that meeting was that the council's focus at the time in May was we probably need to be thinking about individual household relief and nonprofit support. Uh, so I want to focus mostly on, on those two tonight. This slide is not updated from May, um, so there's, there's all kinds of variety, uh, of different options you can pursue. But what this slide attempted to show are some things you probably need to be thinking about. Um, if you're going to be offering individual and household relief and that's the, the considerations piece or the, the, the bullet points under the yellow heading. We have to think about what we want those thresholds for eligibility to be. And that's some of the things that you've just, you know, some of the, the topics you've been discussing the last couple of meetings is that how many rules and regulations do you want to put on these funds, how accessible should they be? And yet, uh, how do we make sure that we are, um, investing our dollars to, to get to those who need it the most? And that, uh, we know that those dollars are, are, um, going towards those critical, um, items that we want to help with, be it rent or utilities or whatever the case may be. And then as Tracy's mentioned here, um, the, the duplication of benefits is really important. And you're already starting to see many different agencies facilitating, uh, administering different funds. We really have to make sure that we have a system in place to where everybody's talking to each other and we're, and we're not duplicating those benefits. Because as you just talked about in your previous discussion, we don't have enough money to take care of everybody's, uh, um, financial challenges. We have to make sure that every dollar we spend, uh, goes as far as it can and is not duplicated. So from the water, uh, utility side, um, we've talked about shut offs and late fees and some of the things that I, I began to talk about earlier today you need to think about. Um, yes, we have nine hundred and fifty plus accounts that are behind. Um, about five percent of those, I think, are on our, um, you existing utility discount program. Um, so do we want to work with those folks that are on that utility discount program? Uh, or do we want to wipe the slate clean for everybody that's late? Um, do we want to, um, really make a big push to expand our utility discount program right now? This is a great opportunity for us to go out and market that program and get more people that are eligible to, to be signed up and then allow them to accrue those benefits. To me, that's an example of something that'll have a long-term effect. You're not just helping somebody for a month or two, but if you can get them on a program that they didn't know existed and that they didn't know they could benefit from, you are helping them, uh, uh, next year, year beyond. Uh, and as long as, as long as they remain eligible, uh, going forward. Um, the water rate increase we've talked about, um, direct housing assistance. Again, that's a part of what's on your agenda tonight with the Center for Worker Justice contribution. Although it's not strictly, uh, for housing, it certainly would help, um, alleviate, uh, housing costs. We've talked about food security, childcare, transit, all these things are, um, are different things the city can do. There, these aren't recommendations from staff, but we're trying to just paint a picture that there's all kinds of recovery options that we can do. Um, some are going to be more urgent than others. Uh, we know that housing is going to be urgent, we know that utilities are going to be urgent as soon as there are, uh, shut offs occurring. Uh, as soon as there are eviction moratoriums that are lifted, um, things like that. We know that that's probably got to be the most urgent and that's probably where our most immediate focus is. But as we progress through this pandemic and we, we get actually through it and into a recovery phase, you could start looking at things like transit rides, for example, uh, when people are more comfortable riding on transit. Uh, it's a great opportunity for us to consider getting them, uh, getting people back onto transit or introducing new people to transit, uh, through some type of fair, free or discounted, uh, program. So again, some examples of, of individual and household relief there. As I move to nonprofit real quick, um, obviously the direct aid is, is occurring through some of our C D B G funds, uh, that we've received. Those are limited funds, um, you know, the, the amount that we're able to provide above and beyond what you have already provided through your aid agencies program, isn't going to be significant in the grand scheme of things. It's going to help, no doubt about it, the agencies will be extremely grateful for getting it. Uh, but the problem or the magnitude of the, of the problem is, is much more significant than, uh, what we're able to, um, uh, fund through those C D B G dollars. So, you know, you, you're, you're probably going to look at, uh, need to look at, um, what the long-term needs are of the nonprofit community. And, um, one of the things mentioned here is, is certainly, this is a great opportunity for us to continue to look for ways to, um, uh, gain long-term efficiencies with, with nonprofit organizations, whether that's finding partnerships that don't exist right now or funding, um, organizations in a way that not only, uh, help them fill some immediate gaps in their services uh, and in their financials frankly right now, but yet are there ways that we can fund them that will, um, help them um, for the foreseeable future too. And, and those tend to be creative discussions that are needed, but, um, are there, are there debt reduction strategies that we could look at to help a nonprofit that immediately takes some, some burden off their books, but also helps, um, them with their cash flow going forward? So again, I'm going to, I'm going to leave it at that, there's a lot more detail in this, uh, presentation. But, um, I want to make sure you all have ample time to, to discuss, uh, where your priorities are right now.
All right, counselors, what are thoughts?
Uh, my initial thoughts are that, are, at least for me, our priorities remain pretty much the same. Uh, and we need to figure out how to organize as, as Jeff was saying, how to have a structure so that, um, so that we can focus on the people who are the hardest hit, um, on housing and utilities and so that we can also focus, uh, to some extent on, on supporting the nonprofits who are also supporting those people. To me, the question is how, how we like quickly and efficiently put, um, some structure in place so that we can end up with, with, with workable framework going forward because we don't know how long this is going to last. But we know that we want, um, people to stay in housing, we want people to stay fed. Uh, and we want our very robust nonprofit community to be able to continue to function and help with that support.
I guess when I threw out there that, uh, yeah, I, I, I agree with you again, as, yeah, this is, I'm still also my priority remaining the same. But I would like just to mention that the Affordable Housing Coalition, they're going to have a meeting on Friday, inviting all the housing nonprofit to talk about how the best to coordinate all the relief and avoid, you know, I needed duplication. And I, I think Tracy has chose also invited for that meeting. And I, I think this is will be like great cooperate way, uh, all those people will come together and try to figure out how they can do this together, so everybody will benefit out of it.
I would hope that, that H C D C or people representatives from H C D should, would be a part of that as well.
I guess helps Sarah hearing us and she would do that.
I would agree that my priorities remain the same as what we talked about a couple of months ago. Um, I also agree, we need some kind of structure to facilitate being able to respond quickly with still some framework for understanding the requests that are coming forward and making sure that they're, um, in line with these kind of guiding principles that we've talked about, uh, a couple of times now and that I think we're all in agreement on. Um, Jeff reminded me just maybe this morning, maybe within the last couple of days, that we have an emergency, um, funding request framework that was developed, um, earlier this year. And so I, I would recommend that we look at using that for these kinds of requests to help streamline and not reinvent the wheel every time something comes forward. So I don't know if other people remember, remembered that process or not, but if, if that framework or parts of that can be applied to the COVID relief request, I think that would be helpful.
One of the thing.
No, go ahead, Bruce.
Oh, one of the things that I, that I'm hearing is that we want, we wanted to find some time to talk about this, but you know, COVID's been here since March. And we need to get this on an agenda so that we can really spend some time and advocate or, or, or give direction as to how we're going to, uh, fulfill our priorities. So if I'm hearing at least, uh, um, Mayor Pro Tim and, um, and I guess even, uh, Council Wyner and Burgess, they mentioned that their priorities are there, which I would imagine is the individual household relief and the nonprofit is where we want to focus our attention. I think we need to really carve out, um, time. Uh, of course, today we can't do it because we're running out of time here at our work session. And then, uh, it's not on formal, uh, agenda. So I might propose that next work session, we actually, um, talk about this in the work session. It's hard to put anything on the formal agenda, I don't know if we want to give, uh, a, a, a dollar amount, turn it over to staff, or do we want to work, uh, like three people work on this outside of council meeting before next council? I, I'm not sure how we want to do this, but we need to figure out a way uh, to kind of allocate some funds, kind of, uh, figure out what are the programs we want to do. Because this is, is, we're in the third month of COVID nineteen. And so if I'm counting correctly, I'm not. We're in the fifth month. We're in the fifth month of COVID nineteen. And so we, I think we need, at this point, counselors, I think we need to, um, make some decisions and, uh, let's put our, uh, funding where our priorities are.
And you know, I guess when I mentioned one thing so everybody know about it, uh, you know, the delay that has been caused was by the, um, you know, the, 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 we did not receive the guideline of how to spend money, even though Jeff told me that we receive this out money like long time ago, I was very excited that it will be going through immediately, but we have to wait for the guideline from the government about how we can spend this money. I took them forever to come back. So with even, you just saying five months and we did not even start the program yet, it will be next Monday. So, uh, you know, people are suffering, what we, you don't know, I have people come here and they say, I can show you my credit card statement, I have a credit card for ten thousand dollar credit line and I paid a month of April for June and this program just came through. How I'm going to pay this debt, people, they go to debt because immigrant doesn't know the right. They don't know there is eviction protections. I was, everybody would say, I wasn't know because the landlord was be, putting a pressure on me. Uh, so that I, they told me that if I don't pay, I will be evicted and I don't want to be homeless. That's why I have to figure a way, even if I went into debt, I have to figure a way to, yes, bezos. There is many, many stories like adding on and on, uh, but what I, I'm, I'm saying that because, uh, you know, delaying things to come back to the next council meeting, I'm just like also, you know, figuring out the, after that, we're going to figure out that's fifteen days and we're going to figure out the guideline and it could be more than that if we're, if it's, yeah, it would be more than that. So I, I just mean like we are, things are really get delayed and those people, uh, for example, yeah, the, the, the Center for Worker Yes, as I, they, I, I know that they have things tonight, I don't have even to talk about that. But I'm thinking when they push it very hard, I know that they want to, uh, cover the months of, uh, of August and July because no one was eligible for months of July for any another program and the months of August. People are past you two months, uh, one month and another month is coming soon. By the time that we will get here, the eviction, is it ended on July the series, I guess? My understanding, maybe it's already removed, people will be in dangers. Uh, if we want to do something like that, hopefully are not going to affect the current applications.
All right, I know Sue, the, uh, the councilman wanted to say something.
I was going to say that, agree with what other counselors have said about our priorities in terms of the individuals, um, and household relief and the nonprofits. And I totally agree that we need some structure. Um, and as Counselor Burgess said, I think the fact that we, you know, we did just, just a few months ago, put in place a process for emergency requests. Um, it would seem to me that we ought to use that process, um, going forward if we have requests from agencies for money. I guess to the mayor's point, I guess the question becomes, are we now talking about, um, some other specific allocation of city dollars? Which to me, I'm not ready to do that yet when we're just barely getting, um, the federal money and some of these other flows of money starting to come in. So it would, would seem to me that we might be, um, it might be a little soon for us to do this. I know it's frustrating because of the delay in getting the federal money and the guidelines, et cetera. But now that those are ready to go live, it would seem like we want to utilize those. Use our emergency funding, uh, or emergency request process that we've put in place. And then I would encourage that maybe we do have, you know, three council members that, that sit down outside of our meeting to meet with staff additionally to maybe understand this better and look at what other options we might want to explore going forward. And if we do it that way, then it doesn't just get pushed off from every two weeks, like Maz is saying, from one meeting to the next, that we could start making progress on some other potential avenues of assistance. But I do think we have time with those since the federal money is now here and ready to be started.
And I also think that we have some real, um, some real resources that we can bring to bear. Maz, you were just talking about the Affordable Housing Coalition and the group that they're bringing together. If they, uh, we have had groups present to us before, including in, in work sessions. None of us have to figure this out from scratch, there are a lot of people who are working on this every day. If they can, if, for example, we can ask people, like the group that's coming together on, on Friday together with H C D C to come up with a list of suggestions. I know H C D C has done that before, but we haven't looked at them specifically. We also have the legacy, um, nonprofits who we could ask to come together and really give us their perspective so that we can, that we can have it all in one place, um, and, and, and find a real way forward.
Mayor, if I, if I may, um, I, I think you all bring up great points. I, I, I think, um, what the council probably doesn't want to happen is, is for the city to be kind of flat footed and, and for a big wave of evictions or a, a big crisis to hit and for us to, you know, have to jump through a couple of meetings as, as Mayor Pro Tim was describing. So what I would encourage is allow your staff in collaboration with, uh, whether it's some council members or, or, uh, local providers, uh, to put together a framework, um, so that we can administratively, um, authorize some expenditures, um, through existing partners that we have, um, to, to, to help react quickly should we find ourselves in a situation where maybe the federal dollars, um, uh, aren't addressing a gap in our community. And we have a, a certain part of our community that's, that's not able to access the funding and they're facing evictions. You don't really want to have to wait for a council meeting to, to have to authorize those funds. So, um, I think there's some longer term recovery that you all can take some meetings and have some discussions about. But, um, you're, you're probably going to want, um, to be a little bit more nimble, um, just not knowing what's going, what's going to happen in August. We don't know if the federal government's going to pass a, a CARES Act, um, uh, another CARES Act type of bill to extend some of these benefits, we don't know what the governor's going to do. So, um, I'd be happy to, to work with a, a few counselors or, or just as staff, bring you some recommendations on how we can, how we can move quickly through existing partners, uh, that we have um, so that we don't get caught flat footed in the case of, uh, uh, a, a real housing crisis that we all think is probably on the, on the horizon.
I, I think that sounds like a really good plan, Jeff, because, you know, sometimes the two weeks between meetings seems like almost two months. It, it can be a really long time, uh, especially if there's something that's urgent. But I, I think your idea about looking at what we've got, the research. But I, I think your idea about looking at what we've got, the resources and then literally we don't get caught with our pants down and, and needing to scramble to put something together. I think that's a, a good idea.
I would agree.
I agree too, but the only thing I want to highlight on this too, yes, we have money out there as, you know, Susan Mims said. For, from the federal, it's just going to, next Monday, we have some on the shelter house that will continue to this week, at least to the end of this week. And you know, we, we are fulfill some, like a big huge group of the resident of Iowa City. To have vast supply for those programs. The only people that who are missing is undocumented people. And I think if we get the city money, that will also be another base for another people. Until we think about a way that to come up with something else in a structure or whatever. Everyone was allocating here and the city manager was saying the same thing. I, I just wanna throw that out there.
I want to make sure that I understand. You, you're saying we can create kind of the, the collaboration between the city, city staff. And maybe a few counselors as well as other organizations. But you want to make sure that undocumented individuals are also in that conversation.
I, I, what I meant is right now Susan, Susan Mims just said, we, I agree with her. She just said there is money out there just being allocated to the community. And it will be, we, you know, there is federal money there, some of our residents will be eligible for. If they are not eligible to the city money, they will be eligible to the state money. Who is missing in that picture is undocumented people. And if we're going to wait, as also Susan Mims requests that, and I agree, we can wait, no problem. If we're going to wait to do that, we want to make sure where we will allocate money for undocumented people through the. I'm not, I'm not pushing you to approve the Center for Worker Justice by any means. You know, this is, yeah, tonight, but I'm just saying that we want to make sure until we come up and wait for another thing. To like to figure out the structure and to figure out what we want to do, whether we want like new city money or not. That would take time. So let us move this, make sure everybody have some to apply until we come up with something else. I hope you, I answered your question.
Yeah, maybe, I think you had me until the last minute, until the last, last ten seconds.
Me, the mayor pro tem is, is trying to thread the needle here on a conflict of interest issue.
Exactly, and that's why I'm not, I don't want to talk about it, but.
I think we know where you're going and probably you would be best to quit.
I'm quitting, but why you don't talk about it if you understand what I mean? Yeah, I don't want to talk too much on this because it's conflict of interest for me to talk about. If I start talking, obviously, and you're going to understand, you know, what I mean.
All right, so it sounded like the majority of counselors, when I saw heads nodding, they were in agreement with. City staff working together with some community partners and maybe a few counselors working alongside with Jeff and city staff. Does that, am I correct on understanding the majority of council wanted that? Just by nodding your hands, yep, all right.
But you know, keep in mind, I'm saying with understanding that the money that I would say have to be eligible for everyone, that's it.
Yes, 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 yes. So with that, maybe we'll start with three counselors. I think that's what I heard was proposed. Are there three individuals that would like to be a part?
I want to.
I would be interested.
I hear Mayor Pro Tem and Councilor Mims.
My only concern with the mayor pro tem is, is the potential conflict of interest. We, we all know that strong interest and I think others can represent that. And I, I don't know, I, I would just take, I would hate for us to get misinformation where that's a problem.
That's okay, no problem. As long as there is somebody there, we'll talk about the whole community, including undocumented people, immigrants, everyone in this community. I don't have to be there and it's better somebody else to advocate for those people than me is, is much better.
I apologize for that.
That's all I, I'd be interested to.
Okay, now you have three.
All right, so we have the three, okay. Anything else on this? We'll be looking forward to next meeting to have more discussions on it. All right, we only have about, we'll say, seven minutes to kind of, and, and we, if we need to come back, we can always come back after. But. Any clarifications of agenda items? And I'll delay the mask talk. I guess I just wanted to make, make mention out there to everyone that today, an order was made for masks. And it will be in effect until September fifteenth. And I hope that the residents in our community do understand the necessity as to how. I, I felt as well as all of the counselors here felt, it was necessary for the safety of our community that masks be ordered. And I'm looking forward to total compliance within our community. So thanks to everybody for who, those that have reached out, that have already showed their support for the mask. And even for those that may not be in, may not be happy with the order. What I will say is that you wearing a mask and I wearing a mask, help the numbers go down. And so that's what I would encourage all of us to do is to wear the mask. And with that, we're gonna go and do some clarification of agenda items. Hearing none. Info packet discussion, so info packet June ninth.
I think that's actually July.
July ninth? Uh-oh, okay. June sixteen, July sixteenth?
I wanted to comment on IP, I believe it's five, the report from the fire department and the police department on, on the fireworks calls. This past season. Kind of goes along with an item, item sixty and our correspondence from a community member. Regarding the use or abuse as it stands of fireworks. And I, I've known the person that wrote that for a long time and she's not one to complain about things. So for her to, to be concerned about this and upset. And she sent some wonderful photos that showed that obviously fireworks had been used. It wasn't just simple little sparklers, it was major fireworks. And our community members should not have to tolerate and, and endure these things. Their, their pets, the infants, the people with PTSD that are especially affected by this, it's, it's very traumatic to them. And I believe that before the next period of time, which is the Christmas, New Years. Where they're going to be allowed to be sold again. I think we as a council need to visit this issue and the use or misuse of fireworks in, within our city limits. And perhaps even a work session topic that we can, we can talk about. What we really need to do about this to, to curb the use of this. Because it was quite a problem. It was like triple the number of calls this year over last year. And we, we just, I think we need to look at that for the wellbeing. We're talking about the health of our community. This relates to the wellbeing of our community too, because it was a big issue this year.
Any other items from July sixteenth IP?
Can I skip back to the agenda real quickly? I forgot that late handouts are part of the agenda.
Yes.
May I? Late handouts, six M. This was an email that came into staff regarding flying the flag at half mast in honor of Representative John Lewis. That came out, we have a, a resolution that we passed, I think, back in oh nine on the council. And we typically follow president and governor's orders and then we have some other cases in which we would do that. And unfortunately, because of COVID and change of staffing, obviously. That order, when it came in on the weekend of, you know, of all times was missed. I would like, and I did talk to Jeff about this earlier today. I would like to advocate that the council. Direct staff to go ahead and fly the flag on the top of city hall at half mast. Starting tomorrow through Friday in honor of John Lewis.
I would approve of that.
Yeah, I think it was a unfortunate oversight, not intentional by any means.
Because.
No, it was a combination of the weekend and COVID and changing staffing is how it got missed and so.
Yeah, I would be, I would be in agreement.
Thank you, I appreciate your support on this. I think it's a really important one. He was a definite icon of this country and will be sorely missed. He's done a tremendous amount for us.
Yep, agreed. Any other agenda items? Hearing none. Can we say, I think what we'll do is we'll just save our updates. And we'll give that at the end of council unless there is someone that has a burning update that they want to give now. Hearing none, all right, we will be back at seven PM.